And did anybody see if Rich ever came on or not? Um, there's an RK, but could that be him? Oh, it's Ray. That's Ray. Well.
I'm here at 7:15.
Okay. All right. Ready to record?
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. Kind of on this stormy evening we're having outside, but we're all in our own homes. So I will call the meeting to order. This is Wednesday, September 3rd, our city meeting. And Jorge would like, oh, if everybody can put your mute, please. And Jorge could put up the pledge allegiance to the flag and if everybody can just say it silently to yourself. All right. Thank you, Jorge. And I'm going to get Allison is on. Of course she's in. But Allison, could you two roll call, please?
Olson.
I'm here. Insurance getting some kind of feedback with all her equipment she's got there.
I want to mute everybody and then whoever's speaking then can unmute themselves.
Okay, Sykes.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Kellum. Alex Johnson, sorry. Alex Johnson.
Here. Could you please say Alex Johnson II because there isn't Alex Johnson to work for the city?
Yes, sir. I will. Bill Coburn.
Here.
Canopa.
Here. So Dick, are you hearing more feedback or not? You don't have your mic on. Dick, you're muted.
I prefer us to go down somewhere.
Is anybody out there in feedback? Dick was saying.
No feedback anymore.
I think there's somebody. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Allison, and welcome, everyone. Um, we have a lot on our screen this evening and I want to thank you for all attending. Um, first, we have a special presentation and this is kind of an annual presentation that we have. First time we'll be having this done virtually where it's usually, you know, done in our council chambers. And this is going to be over the Human Relations Commission's awards and the Human Relations Commission 2019 annual report. And Jorge, did you want to introduce the staff or introducing Steph as the presenter?
Yes, I see a few of the, may I say a field of the HRC commissioners with us. We have a commission, a chair, Stephanie Newton and Vice Chair Scott Lawley. Um, there might be some others, but I don't see them on camera. And Chair Newton was going to be providing the report and also the award information for tonight. Thank you.
All right, Steph?
Thank you so much for introducing me and thank you to the City Council for having us here tonight. So we are presenting our annual 2019 Human Relations Commission Award. It's a little later than usual. Typically, we present this around May, but with COVID, we are getting to it when we can. So award recipients are based upon two different categories. We have an individual category and then another category for an organization or a business. And then we also do recognize runners runner up for each category. And so the selection process is it's done by a vote for everyone on the Human Relations Commission. And the selection is based upon demonstrated commitment to, you know, the philosophies through community programs and activities here in Albany. Uh, so I wanted to go ahead and get started with our individual nominee, sorry, our individual runner up. Um, this person was nominated by Jolene Thompson. And the reason that they were nominated, uh, so I'll, I'll, so her name is Jenny Siwell. I believe that her last name has recently changed because she did, did just get married.
That is true. It's now Jenny Aristin.
Okay, perfect. I'll get, I'll get the certificate that we have for you. Reprinted with your new last name. Congratulations on your marriage.
Thank you.
I wanted to read the reason why Jolene nominated you and just thank you for everything you did. So Jolene, when she submitted your, your nominate nomination, she said Jenny has created something special through the creation of a chapter called the Little Flower Girls Club here in Albany. It's brought a diverse group of girls together, including many Latina children, Latinas, Latina children who come from Spanish speaking households. The girls get together and work on crafts, study virtues and other joyful things. But most importantly, they perform acts of service here in the community. They visit nursing homes and care facilities, the soup kitchen, homeless shelter, et cetera. And they interact with patrons, share special gifts with them and show them loving kindness. Jenny has helped show these girls the importance of seeing marginalized people in our community and treating them with dignity, love and respect. For us parents, we often have language barriers amongst ourselves. But despite these challenges through our kids, Jenny has helped us also to see one another and begin our own relationships. The diversity in the group adds to their ability to reach out into our community and connect in caring, meaningful ways. Um, thank you so much for being there. As I'm a parent as well and I know, one, just how hard it is to corral and work with a whole bunch of little kiddos that have a lot of energy. But being that kind of mentor and having such a positive impression on, on young children's lives here in Albany and then going out and taking it a step further and doing acts of service, that's incredible. And so grateful that you are in our community. So.
Okay.
I will make sure to get your new, if you would like your new last name on this and then I can.
Yes, yes.
Perfect.
Cool. Thanks, Stephanie. Thank you so much.
You are so welcome. All right. So the individual who, uh, came again, first place is not sure if that's the right terminology for the individual, um, was nominated by Janet Mix. Jan, are you here with us? Oh, you guys are right there. Together. Perfect. Okay. So, um, Janet nominated Joanne Zimmer. Let's see, Joanne, I have a beautiful award for you right here with your name engraved on it. And I also wanted to take a moment to read what Janet wrote. She said, Joanne Zimmer has worked on many committees. Has been on many community action boards to benefit the city, the citizens here in Albany. She has worked to reduce homelessness here in Oregon and the city of Albany for over 20 years. Currently, Joanne sits on a community committee for zoning and city matters. And she has been on the board for the Jackson Street Youth Shelter since before it was built. Joanne has been instrumental in Jackson Streets, Jackson Streets beginnings and is a tireless advocate for those with no voice. Please consider honoring Joanne for all the good she has brought to us. And so Joanne, we will be dropping, I'll drop this off. I'll reach out for your address so I can get that over to you. But thank you for everything you've done for our community.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you. My sister. My best advocate, yes.
That is, that's the, that's what sisters are for.
Yeah, absolutely. So thank you very much. Yes, thank you.
So our next category is in the business and or organization category. And so for the runners up, we have the Mid Valley Prelude Symphony, who was nominated by John Clark. And I'm actually my neighbor down the street, I think is one of the beginning founders of the Mid Valley Prelude Symphony. So I have seen a lot of this firsthand, but the reason that John nominated the Mid Valley Prelude Symphony is because the youth orchestra here, um, it started back in 2007 by three parents who saw a need for a strings program here in Albany. And, uh, but our schools here in Albany had that program previously, but due to budget constraints, the program was cut in the eighties. Um, since then, there hadn't been any opportunity for youth in the area to get acquainted with a violin, viola, cello or string bass. Bass, I apologize. Private instructors in Albany are hard to find and they're also fairly expensive. And, uh, even though funding was difficult and getting to local schools involved proved even more challenging. Uh, this group of parents came together and they wanted to, and they created opportunities for children here in Albany to explore their interests in orchestra. And they got other parents involved also in our community. So there were, back in 2007, about 10 students and I believe, oh, we have now over 170 students just over the past. So fabulous program. Not to bring up my daughter again, I'm kind of obsessed, but she plays the cello, well, little. A little, because she's little, but I know how impactful instruments are on, in children's lives. And great to see that even though there have been budget constraints that our community has come together to, uh, provide and create opportunities for students here in Albany. All right. And so the, uh, business and organization who is being awarded the Human Relations Award for 2019 is No Dings. It looks like Corey Amina Barton are here and I'm seeing their nominee nominators, Mark Spence and Amanda Alabak, Katie Alabak. Uh, and so I'm going to read why Mark and Katie nominated No Dings. They said Corey Amina Barton run an extraordinary business that embodies a philosophy of pay it forward. They're always kind and fair to their clients, employees and members of the Albany business community. Where they really stand out, however, is in the support of community groups, events, education and city programs. Their energy and generosity is only matched by their desire to avoid any fanfare and thus ensure that attention is centered on individuals in the larger community they support and help. Besides their many unrecorded kindnesses and acts of generous assistance, they've established a number of monetary and service slash project donations to various organizations and programs. Um, and there is a list and I will read them. The Albany Public School Foundation No Dings Scholarship, um, which is awarded to graduating students at Albany Options West, West Albany, South Albany. And I believe that was a $5,000 scholarship. Um, Paint It Forward, which I'm not sure what that is. Uh, but I would love to hear more. And then Safe Haven Humane Society, those are, um, major donors for project, product, services and funding. Um, the Boys and Girls Club, the Albany Carousel, for serving on the board, providing direct funds as well as products and services. Um, serving on the board at the Family Tree Relief Nursery, again, providing free design services and products for, um, a local nonprofit here. Um, and then you also encourage your employees to get involved in the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Albany wouldn't be the same without you guys. It's really being a businessman, being an organization and going above and beyond. It's not expected, but is always appreciated and just to make a positive difference here in Albany.
Thank you so much. Um, we're just humbled and, um, so honored to receive this award. Um, having No Dings for 31 years, um, over the years, it's given us the opportunity to, um, with what we do creatively, um, you know, help the community, uh, through ways, um, either with individual clients, organizations, nonprofits, uh, things that are important to us that we can do, uh, through our business, um, that reach out to the community and that's really important to us. And, um, we appreciate the, um, the support and the community we live in. And, um, we just hope that we can continue, uh, to give back. And, um, again, like I said, um, this isn't something we're good at as far as receiving these sorts of awards or, um, yeah, we just feel humbled by it all and thank you. And we'll do our best to continue with things for the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So Sharon, I'll turn things back over to you.
Okay. Oh, I want to thank all the recipients, so of the awards. And we greatly, on behalf of the city of Albany, we greatly appreciate, uh, No Dings. You guys do a lot for our community and it is very appreciated. And, um, and then seeing the other recipients, I was, um, Jenny, I wish she could have had her camera on. She's such a gem. I've known her for years and, and Joanne, you didn't even mention everything Joanne has done over the years too. So, um, seeing, uh, knowing Joanne and, um, she's still very involved and also the chair of our Community Development Commission. And, um, so she's probably going to be staying for that public hearing coming up too, but, but no, just wonderful. And thank you so much. So, and thank you, thank you, Stephanie for, um, and the HRC, um, Human Relations Commission for taking this on and kind of going through the process of, um, getting the nominations and, um, and, you know, wading through to be able to find, um, who should be the recipients. So good job. Thank you. But, okay. And did you have anything on the commission report? Steph?
That I do. Um, I believe I need permission to share my screen.
And you're totally done with all the Human Relations Commission awards on that part? Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you both.
Okay, so. Okay, so let me just find my other screen really quickly. There it is. Okay. So this is, thank you guys for having us. Uh, this is our 2019 annual report presentation. Um, there's also a PDF version. I emailed it over to Jorge and I think that he has gotten it to everyone. But if you have not, you soon will have it. So. All right. So the introduction, the Albany Human Relations Commission was established back in 2007, actually by the, um, city council. And the goal was to strengthen the connections within Albany's diverse community. Um, with an emphasis on equity, you know, inclusion, creating equal opportunity and, uh, ensuring that all residents received, uh, fair treatment. So specifically called out in our bylaws is, uh, to create a harmonious relations. So the human, and in order to create harmonious relations here in Albany, um, the human. the Human Relations Commission can recommend programs, activities, ordinances, expenditures, or any other appropriate governmental activities to the City Council. And again, as I mentioned, a specific emphasis on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that would be the basis on how we recommend any community activities. So, there have been a few changes over the years to the Human Relations Commission. So, back in 2007, we, it was established, Ordinance 5665. And then, a little bit later that year, Ordinance 5671, we changed up some rules where commissioners needed to reside within city limits. And then also, there was a need for staggering, that this is just part of the initial creation. But then with Ordinance 5866, we amended Albany Municipal Code 2.25030, which meant the term of office and initial appointment. It removed the restriction that members could not serve for longer than six consecutive years. All right. So, I'm not sure if anyone else here has read the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, but in Article One, the first sentence is, "All human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights." And I feel, I was rereading this week, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, and that just stuck out to me. So, I felt it really embodied the spirit of what we are doing here and what we want to acknowledge here at the Human Relations Commission. So, 2019 was kind of a builder year. So, at the end of 2018, we had two commissioners resign, Denise Taffin and Javier, who was previously our Chair. And then we had two other, Kim and Tina, their terms were up and they decided they did not want to continue on and seek another term. So, we had quite a rebuilding year with only, I believe it was two folks, myself and Alice Brockrightens, who has since left the commission as well at the end of 2019. But to rebuild with new commissioners. So, January, Jesse Brenman and Joe Ray Perkins were appointed. And we tried to, we started getting everyone on the ropes. February, we had the pleasure of working with and meeting with GAF's Assistant Superintendent Lisa Harland. And specifically during our meeting, we discussed challenges that students face, that the staff is facing, and then their goals. And it's kind of, when I was going back and rereading our minutes from this meeting, it is just so incredible how quickly things changed from what we were concerned about back in February to now where we're at now with, with where we're creating Albany Public School. I don't think they would have the same answers. And it's also just a testament to how wonderful GAF is with navigating any hurdles that they've, they've come across in supporting their students. So, in March, we also had another commissioner appointed, and that would be Daniel Raw. And then also at the same meeting, we had Tom Johnson, who is the President and Facilitator for PFAC for the Corvallis and Albany area. He came and visited with us. And this is also, prior to this meeting, myself and Commissioner Jesse Brenman went and met with the PFAC group to learn more about what they were doing and how the Human Relations Commission could support them. So, in April, Commissioner Equinoa, who also has since resigned because he moved to Independence, missing, missing a lot on our board. He attended the African American Youth Leadership Conference, and that was held at LBCC, which is spectacular. It's held in different areas throughout Oregon each year. And so, we're really privileged to have it at LBCC. He brought back to our commission that the youth were challenged to identify what needed to be changed in their school, tools to, you know, speak out, and how they can become a catalyst for change. So, in May, unlike now, September, this is when we actually presented our Human Relations Commission Awards. And so, feel, we're a little, little behind schedule here, but it was absolutely wonderful. In June, we, several members of the commission attended the Albany Pride March in support of our LGBTQ plus members here in our community. In July, we had several commissioners volunteer and attend a Lights for Liberty vigil. And in August, commissioners attended their neighborhood national night out events as representatives from the Human Relations Commission. In September, on 9/11, both myself and Commissioner Joe Ray Perkins, we attended the 9/11 memorial ceremony. That was held at the Lillen County Courthouse. And later on that month as well, oh, it looks like I have a, I have a copy paste error here. I attended the Festival Latino event on the 15th of September. This is my daughter, this is, again, let me bring up my daughter. This is a picture I took, and my daughter thought that the biophlorico dancers were just incredible. And they, they were just so talented. If you remember, if one of their performances, they balanced water on their head while doing a whole dance. And I, I can barely get a cup of water, you know, out of the sink without spilling it. So, I'm incredibly impressed with these phenomenally talented dancers. All right, so in October, we worked with the Hispanic Advisory Committee. And we discussed how both groups can support each other's missions and goals moving forward. And in November, we had the pleasure of connecting with the new Fire Chief, Shane Wooton. He came and he introduced himself to the commission and wanted to make sure that he made himself available and a resource. So, in December, I feel like with quite a few new commission, commission members on our, on the Human Relations Commission, we're really getting our feet under ourselves. And we, the discussion came up that we want to have a greater positive impact here in the community. And so, we landed on inviting community resource agencies to begin coming to the following years of 2020 for HRC meetings. So, I then took it upon myself, reached out to like Jackson Street or Chance so we could become more knowledgeable on them. And that's what we have been focusing on a lot of, well, when we can meet here in 2020 so we can connect our residents with resources that they might need. So, thank you all for the opportunity for us to serve our community. We've, I personally, I know that I've appreciated the privilege to work with, you know, key stakeholders in our community to strengthen our, strengthen Albany. And I wanted to reaffirm that the Human Relations Commission, we, we do have our commitment to diversity, equity, and include, and inclusion and supporting folks that may experience, you know, hate crimes or, you know, microaggressions. We're, we're here to help create a more harmonious community. So, thank you all, and I'll get the PDF over to you guys. And that has the no go, time, actually. Let me screen share that. Let me, how do I do that? Okay. Right here, okay. So, I can quickly, I'll just show you guys something pretty cool. So, with, this is the PDF right here. But it goes more in depth on the introduction. But what is fun, and again, I might have a different, I created more of like a timeline so you all can see exactly who's appointed, when they're leaving, what things look like. For all, for the entire, it's a historical record of everyone here on the Human Relations Commission. Here's our, here's who we had in 2019. And then also, I have updated our visitor list for everyone that came and saw the Human Relations Commission during 2019. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Councilor, questions, Bessie?
Yes, definitely. I want to say, a good presentation. And I want to say, I think the hardest thing, because I don't know what, what staff member does it for the city, but to keep all of the chronological order of when people are appointed, when they leave, when they, it's like, I, good job. It's like, it's amazing.
To get it to that detail, I literally went through everything. You know, had just all, but I feel like it's important to have that, that historical record and easy to find, easy to read. So, no one has to go through.
Yeah, no, good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie, and you did all of that work too, all of that presentation. And that is time consuming, but very talented and very good job, so.
So, I'll tell you my secret though, to getting the report done, since I, this is my third annual report that I've created. I finally, my first report, which was going through and having to reread all the minutes, re-listen to things, make sure I got the right, you know, thing. What I asked our commission to do is, at the, you know, before we close out our, our meeting, to then state, what is, what are we going to put in our annual report for this month? So, we had that month where, while everything's red.
Yeah, good idea. Strategy. No, very good job. And we're grateful for the Human Relations Commission because you are getting out there in the community and making sure attending events. And, and it actually eases up the workload too. All of our boards and commissions eased up the workload of the council because then we're not having to handle the policies over a lot of our boards and commissions and/or being out there, being active. So, it just, it makes, it's just worth so much in our community, having the boards and commissions. And, and actually helping to be that face out in the community is just beneficial and wonderful for our city. So, I want to thank you so much. And I know, I think Ray Kupczynski is on the commission and also Scott Lawley. And I saw the two of them were, were on, yep, Scott weighed there. So, and thank you so much, Scott, you know, for all your work you've done on the commission. And Ray also, hello, Ray. Yeah. Was that it? That attended, so, but, okay, great. All right, is that it now? Steph?
Yep, that is. Do I have any questions from any other councilors?
Counsel, do you have questions?
No.
I just want to say thanks, Steph.
Yeah.
Great report, Stephanie. Great report, Stephanie. Thank you for all the work you do.
Yeah.
Thanks. Any excuse to make a spreadsheet or a presentation, I'll take it.
Love it. So, I think we're still, did Rich Kellam ever come on? Like, did he ever attend?
I haven't seen him.
He said he was going to be late, so, okay, all right. Thank you, Steph. Okay, next, we have a public hearing, and this is going to be over our CBBG 2019 Annual Report, Citizens Participation Plan Amendments for the 2020 Action Plan Amendment and Community Needs. This is going to be on pages three to 45. With that, I'll open the public hearing at 7:48 PM. And Aunt Planner Anne Catlin, would you like to, is Anne here? Yep, there she is. Okay, go ahead and lead. Thanks, Anne. You got your, you're muted. So, yep, Anne, you need your. Do you have any problems? Jorge? So.
You're saying a mute request.
Great about that. I had a screen blocking part of my unmute screen and, and I kept clicking the button and it works. Thank you, counselors. This is Anne Catlin, Community Development Department. And it's kind of nice that I followed the presentation of the Human Relations Commission Awards. There is a Human Relations Commission member on the Community Development Commission, and that is now Steph Newton. She replaced Chris Equinoa. And one of the recipients of awards, Jo Zimmer, is the Chair of that commission. And tonight, I'm just going to go over some of the program requirements, which includes an annual plan, which is not as fancy as what you just saw. It is a template form, but, but we can enlist Stephanie's help next year to make it look better. And also, look at amending a couple of plans and then hearing comments on community needs. And I was going to share my screen unless, Jorge, you want to share the PDF document that I sent over? Yes. I'll try to just share my screen. I don't see him doing that, so it's not letting me share my screen. While I'm waiting to get that up, I did want to say that we did publish a notice in the Democrat Herald two weeks ago. And it looks like my screen is there now. And we received several written comments, which were emailed to you after five. And I'll talk about those at the end of the presentation. But quickly, I will just cover what we have done this past year and remind you that the Community Development Block Grant Program is a program funded by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And the city received a little over $380,000 last year. And then this spring, we were also awarded CARES Act funding. So, I'll cover some highlights from how those funds have been spent over the last year. And the primary goal of the program is to develop urban, viable urban communities that principally benefit low and moderate income neighborhoods and benefit low and moderate income people. Okay. So, to date, with the CARES Act funds, you may remember that money was allocated to provide emergency food boxes, small business grants, that's businesses with 25 or fewer employees, and then also emergency housing assistance. And to date, Salvation Army had one big food drive serving 233 low mod Albany households, almost 1,000 residents. And that was in June. The Small Business Grant Program, the funds from the CARES Act are being matched with funds that Seth Sherry applied for through the state. And that program rolled out maybe a month ago or a couple of weeks ago. And currently, Community Lending Works has over 60 applications and is working through those to determine which ones are going to qualify for this emergency assistance. And then, the Emergency Housing Assistance Community Services Consortium has been managing a really large amount of money, CARES Act money, that came to them for rent relief. And it was determined that the city's funds could be used to help with emergency mortgage assistance. And that is going a little bit slow. We need to increase the awareness of these funds. But it could be that there aren't as many low income households that qualify for these funds because they do have to demonstrate a COVID-19 impact. But we can look at reevaluating how to use those funds, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. So, an ongoing program we have is preserving affordable housing. And Dev Northwest has worked with Albany residents and completed four housing rehabilitations this year, five are in progress. Creating economic, economic opportunities is always important to ensure our residents are able to create jobs for themselves or for residents in our community. And we have a couple of different programs. a couple of different programs. Funds have been allocated to Lynn Benton Community College to provide one-on-one advising and free courses for low and moderate income residents. And then the city has had a small grant program that goes to very small businesses. And then Public Services is where we see the most need, and it is a restricted pot of funds. But still, the programs that the city has been able to fund, I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about those down here. Towed Abuse Prevention, 23 high-risk families were served this year. Furniture Share, serve, you know, 2,000 households, hundreds of beds, 81 dining room tables and furniture and household supplies to, to many other homes. And, and these are very low income households. And then the Senior Companion Program is a program that Cascades West Council of Government operates. And they just get, I mean, a really small amount of community development block grant funds, but it enables them to provide a small stipend to the low income seniors that actually are the companions to the seniors that are shut in in our community. And it offsets our gas costs. And we also, before I scroll through, Jackson Street Youth Shelter provided 20 Albany youth with emergency shelter throughout the year. And we know that those services and the case management they provide are really important. Just a quick, I'm almost done, a quick snapshot of the demographics. As I mentioned earlier, most of the residents served are actually at the very low income level of below 30% of the median income based on household size. And we, we look at the race and ethnicity of residents served because we want to make sure that everyone that needs services is, is getting access to services. And that is a primary goal of the program. And it about represents the, sort of represents the makeup of our population this past year. It's, it's fluctuated from year to year. So that is the, just a summary of the 2019, what we call the Consolidated Plan Report. It's abbreviated as a CAPER. And then two other items that are part of the public hearing, the Citizen Participation Plan. We made a couple of amendments back in April to be able to respond quickly in the event of disasters and the COVID-19 emergency situation was one of those. And there is better language that I suggest we include in the plan that helps the city respond when HUD grants flexibilities in process for any other type of disaster. So it's not specific to COVID-19. So that's essentially what those amendments are. And then the 2020 Action Plan, which we've got a, a little bit of a summary of the budget here on this slide. You just adopted this in April. And at that time, you also looked at how to allocate the first round of CARES Act funding that the city received, which was $220,000, well, $804. So since that time, we have found that childcare is one of the services that has not been funded by a lot of the CARES Act programs and sources that are out there. And because of the virtual school situation, at least through most of October and possibly longer, and also lost wages and jobs, childcare has become a really big need in the community. And we are recommending that $40,000, what you see in red, that was currently allocated to the city's small grant program for new businesses, be allocated to COVID-19 response and add childcare and small business support to, to be able to expand the needs that have been created by COVID-19 and respond more quickly. So that is the purpose of the amendment. And you do have a fair amount of testimony in support of that. And if you approve this amendment, the city will be opening up an application window, and we will be asking providers to apply for funds. And they would then administer these for our low and moderate income families that have been impacted by COVID-19. And I did want to tell you, you may have seen this in Peter's email that came out last week, the city was allocated another round of CARES Act funding. And the timing of it was a little off because we could have talked about all of that tonight. But I have to actually publish this in the paper, and we'll have to hold another public hearing. But the city will be receiving $249,000. And again, for COVID-19 prevention and response. So we are expecting there to continue to be need to support Albany's businesses and help them recover from the crisis. And childcare needs will certainly be more than $40,000. And we've heard from agencies that due to COVID, they have not been able to fundraise, and the services have increased and the revenues have gone down. So there's tremendous need out there because of the pandemic. So we will be holding a public hearing at the end of October to talk about the second round of CARES Act funds. But for tonight, we are just asking you to consider reallocating the $40,000 so that it can be available to respond to childcare needs and small business needs. The last part of the hearing tonight is to hear from community members about needs that could be addressed with what I now call regular CDBG funds, as well as this next round of CARES Act funding. And it's an opportunity for us to hear from you as well. And with that, I do have, I think it was eight or nine letters that you received. I can just read off who submitted those letters and then respond to questions. And before it's opened up for the, if there's anyone else that's going to speak tonight. If that's okay, Sharon, do you want me to go through these letters now? Or do you, should I?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So Dev Northwest submitted a letter in support of the partnership the city has had with them. And they have applied for and received funding for the Housing Rehabilitation Program. And it has truly been working in the community to repair existing low income housing and keep that housing affordable to many households. And Dev Northwest also, you may or may not know that two organizations merged to become Dev Northwest and Community Lending Works, who is overseeing and managing the emergency grant program. They are under the umbrella of Dev Northwest. And they appreciate the work that the city has been doing to serve our residents. And housing affordability is still an issue, and jobs are an issue. And these funds do a lot to address that. The second letter in your packet is from Claudia Torres with Casa Latina Cinitos. And she does a really good job expressing the needs the pandemic has created in our Latina community. And they've seen an increase in lots of different needs from rent and mortgage assistance and jobs. But as you have probably heard in the news, and it is actually true, the pandemic is impacting persons and communities of color at a higher rate than white people. And they are also in greater financial distress. So there's a lot of need still in the community to help our underserved populations get the, the help that they need to get through the pandemic and beyond. The third letter, Albany Helping Hands Shelter, I mentioned this a little bit earlier, but they provide a good example of an agency that is suffering in revenues because of COVID. They've, they've had to shut all of their, the businesses that provide revenue as well as job training for the clients that stay at the shelter. And they've had to postpone their fundraising event. So they are down funds. And then because of the pandemic, their expenses have increased. And that is from Emma Dean. The next letter is from Melissa Goff with the Greater Albany Public School District. And because of the virtual learning and inability for children to attend in-person school, at least for the next month or so, GAPS has found that parents and guardians are needing childcare. And affordable childcare is hard to come by. The pandemic has also actually reduced the number of childcare spots. And childcare needs have increased because hours are longer than typically what they have been in the past, which was just after school. They did a survey recently and had quite a good response of, about, well, of families that came to pick up free backpacks and supplies for kids. And a lot of the families are in distress because of the issue with childcare. And they can't afford childcare. And it's a real problem if you're trying to work at home and help your kids with school. There is a work group. United Way is organizing a work group that I just joined up with a couple of weeks ago, the Childcare Work Group. And that is mentioned in this letter. And there is some information about the work that's been going on. And there is one of your, is an email from Blake Pang, who is the Director with United Way. But the next letter in order of your packet is from the YMCA. And they are expressing interest in applying for these CARES Act funds or the 2020 reallocated funds in order to provide childcare, because the, the needs have increased due to, to school needs. And they do serve a lot of our Albany households, and they have the capability to do that. So they are expressing need as well as interest in, in applying for those funds. And then we've received two letters from residents that are foster care providers. While they are at home watching children, they could use a break from watching the little kids so that they can help the older kids with school. And they expressed a need for help with childcare expenses. There were two different letters. And then the last, we received a second letter from another employee at the YMCA. She's a, it's from Ashley Thomas, the Director of the Early Learning Center. And she said that the childcare needs have really skyrocketed in the community. And many families are struggling to pay for childcare. So that, that is all of the testimony we received. We did hear from Chance at the Community Development Commission meeting. And like other agencies, Chance's expenses have increased greatly with the pandemic. They actually are providing a lot of hotel nights for our unhoused populations. And because of COVID, you know, many people can't stay in other people's homes, or the shelters are trying to limit and space people out. So there has been a, a great demand for more hotel vouchers. And with that, I will open it up for questions. And.
Mike? Mike and then Bessie?
I have a question. And on your first slide, you were talking about emergency housing assistance. And in that, in that conversation, you said that they had to be, they had to prove that they were impacted by COVID. It seems to me that when the governor of the state shuts everything down, wouldn't that be proof enough?
Well, the, the first step is that they have to qualify with their income. But the COVID-19 impact, in order to use the, the disaster declaration and the governor's orders, there are some certain tests that need to be applied. And we can apply that, but if the household is income eligible, that's really the first test. And then if you've lost a job or your hours have been reduced, that's really our second tier of eligibility for these funds. But you are right, that the urgent, the CDBG program does allow for an activity to qualify under what they call urgent need. And that is exactly what this COVID-19 crisis is. It's, it's just a little more complicating than there being a disaster declared. But.
It seems to me, but you know, I'm not, you know, it just seems to me that when people are in distress, you try to make it a little easier, not harder, because what you do is you add discouragement before they even get, get going down the road, because they've got to do all of these things. And you just add to the stress level of these individuals trying to keep a roof over their head. I would think that it would be easier and quicker to get the funds to the people that need it. And I don't know, what, what does it take an average person come in and say, hey, I need help? Was it taking two or three days to be able to access the, those funds? Or, or do they get, I mean, some of these folks, I think, would be on the, on, on the verge of, of losing their homes. And then we add more, lack of a better word, red tape to them getting access to the help that they need.
Those are really good questions. And Community Services Consortium is managing these funds. So I have actually not had somebody come to City Hall or call me at City Hall. But they are managing millions of dollars for a rent relief program, and their requirements are essentially the same. An applicant will complete an application. It's, it, it's an online application. And then somebody on staff at Community Services Consortium calls them back. And they do have to provide the income, verify income information and information about the cost of their mortgage or, or their rent, because the money goes directly to the landlords or the lenders, not to the household. And there's also money available for emergency rental assistance as well. The rental relief program is helping people with up to six months of relief. And we just found out that the city's CDBG funds can help with up to six months as well. One of the issues is that there hasn't been, the eviction moratorium has been extended. So there have not been evictions. And the expectation is that if that gets lifted after December 30th, that there will be a lot more people seeking these funds. But yes, we do need to make sure we're making it as easy as possible. But some of these regulations are federal regulations. So, but I'll look into that and see if we can streamline that.
Well, the other thing you just brought up is it's an online application. Do all of these folks have access to a computer so that they can execute an online application? I mean, I'm just, just throwing that out there because it sounds kind of difficult in some, in, in some instances. Thanks. That's it.
That's a good question. They can actually call the staff person if they have access to a telephone, and the staff can talk them through the application. Again, I am not working on this hand in hand, but when I've looked at the materials that we work with them to get out into the community, there's both an email, a phone number, and then you can go directly to a website to get started on the application. So I think there are multiple ways that residents can apply for this relief assistance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bessie?
Bessie, you're muted.
Darn it. My, my question was along what Mike was saying about the housing assistance. The first part would be, would not, I, I mean, if you're laid off or furloughed, I mean, if you meet the income requirements, would that not be enough right there to prove that, okay, I don't have a job anymore? So that would cut a little bit of the red tape. And then the second part is, when we talk about things like this, you know, Anne, I know you're not handling it or doing it, maybe it'd be kind of good to have a representative from the consortium online too, to. online too, to answer some of these questions. Because we can't expect you to answer if you're not hands-on. So that's just kind of a suggestion maybe for the future. But I, and I am in favor of, of moving the $40,000. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bessie. I will ask the Community Services Consortium to attend the October 28th council meeting. I think that's a really good suggestion. And to answer your question, Bessie, about if somebody's been laid off or their hours reduced, we are looking at that income, not their income before COVID-19. So that will help people qualify for these funds.
Alex, are you wanting to?
Question, a question.
Yeah.
Oh, and I have a question also. So people have been receiving the $600 a week. Is that being counted in this? That should be used for, there's $2,400 a month that should be used for rent and mortgage and things like that. Is that money being counted on the applications as well? My concern is, is that I went to a couple of stores and when that money started coming out, they were sold out on TVs and sold out on extravagances, in my estimation. And Target had no big screen TVs anymore. Is that being taken into consideration when you receive these funds to date? And then now you're applying for this ones. Is that money being, is that being accounted for or, or at least looked into?
I, I don't have the answer to that question, but I will get that to you. I believe that the unemployment assistance does count, but I'm, but it may not. I, I, I just don't know for sure. So I, I will ask Community Services Consortium staff, but.
Follow up to that. Can you have also Dev Northwest, which is also managing some of this money coming as well?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, they've really just gotten started. And yeah, we're ironing out a few technicalities. But I will ask them to present a report to you as well. Thank you.
Okay, is that it, Anne?
That's it for me.
And there was anyone that did sign up to want to speak? But was there anyone that needed to want to comment over the CDBG, CDBG Action Plan, the amendments for this public hearing? So you want to turn on your camera so we can see you. And for some reason, I'm kind of losing my screen here. Anybody see anyone? Oh, not seeing anyone. And then for your information, Rich, since you came on your way at the bottom of my screen, so you'll probably want to holler whenever you want to weigh in. So, okay. With that.
Raise my hand real high.
Yep, you will have to, yeah. So, okay. Not seen anyone. Then with that, I'll close the public hearing at 8:17 PM. Counsel, did you have any other questions? If not, you have a resolution on page 31 and a resolution on page 39.
I move to approve the resolutions.
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Someone's there. So, okay, with that, we've got the items done on that. Is that it, Anne? Did you have anything else?
That's it for me. Thank you so much. And I will see you guys next month with some more information to respond to your questions and suggestions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and all right. Then next we have, this would be item 4B. This is adopting additional parks and recreation fees. This is a resolution on page 47. And I believe Kim is online.
Hi, good evening.
Hello, Kim.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mayor and councilors. I know I said a month and a half ago that it would be almost a year before you saw me again, talking about fees. So I apologize that I wasn't able to hold up my end of the bargain. With that said, as we're continuing to look through and review our fees and procedures, we realized that there wasn't necessarily a consistent structure for sports amenities. And we want to be consistent with our resources. And so in front of you, you have proposed fees that are just resident and non-resident, based on our conversations last time. And these would just be charged if a person or a group wished to have exclusive use of a space that wouldn't allow for drop-ins. We do the same currently with our shelters for, you know, our, our rooms in our facilities. So this is just an extension of the same policy. This will allow us to track and monitor usage better, as well as generate a little revenue to help offset maintenance costs. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, any que- Second, I gotta scroll down the screen. I don't see any from the council. So with that, counsel, you have a resolution on page 47.
I move to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
And I second it.
All right, got a couple of motions and a couple of seconds there. Any more, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, next page, counsel. And this is going to be business from the public. And we have kind of a lot this evening on business from the public. So first, I wanted to mention kind of in regards to the discussion that we had at Monday's work session over, this was conversation over the Human Relations Commission. So there was a motion that was to place the HRC on hold until the end of the year. So it was not, I wanted to make sure everybody understood it was not disbanding the commission. It was not, you know, totally, you know, you know, discontinuing with the commission. It was just to put it on hold. And the reason was, is we've had some vacancies on the HRC. And, and so with that, we, what we do is every year we go out for our annual recruitment. And about in November, we start advertising if people wanted to apply for our boards and commissions, because we have around 20. And every year we have vacancies that come up. And there's like terms that, you know, that end. And then some people, if they don't want to reapply to continue on a commission, then we have the vacancies there. So that recruiting process is always done November, kind of December. And then that is for in January, when we make those appointments. So, so I did want to mention though, that that's what was on Monday. We are not disbanding the HRC. That's what the motion was about, was to put it on hold. I don't know if the council's wanting any other action or to revisit that. That is up to the city council on that. But what I wanted to mention then, that there was many, quite a few people that had sent some emails and wanted to be able to provide testimony. So it was a bit confusing on our agenda. I think some folks looked at the front of it under the CDBG public hearing and that process. And that was if you wanted to provide testimony, you had to respond by 3:00 PM today, not realizing that the business from the public needed to be done by 5:00 o'clock yesterday. So had some discussions on that today. And we're probably going to get that a little bit more clarified at our other future meetings. And I really apologize if anybody got confused over when the timeline was for being able to provide testimony. So, so what we ended up getting before the 5:00 o'clock deadline, there was six people that had sent emails of concerns weighing in about their, over the Human Relations Commission. One was from Melissa Murphy, Cynthia Fisher, Jared Taylor, Lisa Price, Roger Truex, and Linda, you, you done, you done. Then after that deadline, we had received 37 emails. And this is all regards, in regards to the Human Relations Commission. And it was Audrey Caro, Graham Kislinberry, Carly Castanega, Susan Leonard, Tess Weir, Renee Merritt, Choss Jones, Madeline McGregor, Keith Kolkow, Courtney Childs, Javier Cervantes, Claudia Torres, Jill Nelson, Josephine Fleetwood, Cynthia Spencer Hadlock, Sarah Nguyen, Shelby Ensler, Amy Roberts, Anna Lee Haberman, Margie Harshberger, Bridget Truex, Raya Kurtner, Jen Truex, Mika Hubbarath, Jill Nelson, Mithrel Ajushian, Dori Board. And then, then we had Kathy McCarthy was twice, Melissa Kadot, Michelle Marie, Michy DeRose, and Lynn Wiles. After that, even after the 3:45, we had Rachel Shook, John Gotchel, Catherine Weeks, and Kristen Ritter. I apologize if I did not pronounce somebody's name correctly. So all of these names have been entered into the record. So I wanted to make sure everybody did know that. But we didn't have three people that signed up by the deadline, which was yesterday. And they wanted, requested to speak. And then one other person also had after the deadline, but they had signed up to speak. So one is Graham Kislinberry, Keith Kolkow, Javier Cervantes, and Michy DeRose. I haven't seen Graham on. Did Jorge, have you?
Let me check here.
And I think I saw Javier. And I think I, and I see Keith, but I haven't seen Michi.
Yeah, Graham is not, not here.
Okay, so with that, then next would be Javier. Did you want to turn your camera on and your microphone? Hello? And then go ahead and state your name so that Tate picks you up and spell your last name, please, and your address.
Yes, my name's Javier Cervantes. I am a resident of Albany, Oregon. I am here as a resident. Taxpaying resident, I live in North Albany. I'd prefer not to give my address for fear of the hostilities in our, in our community when it comes to people of color, unfortunately. So I'm going to go ahead and check my identity there. So if people want to find me, they can, I'm sure. Is that going to be a problem?
No, that's fine, Javier.
Thank you. Javier, J-A-V-I-E-R, Cervantes, C-E-R-V-A-N-T-E-S. I served in the capacity of Chair of the Human Relations Commission for three years approximately. Three years prior to that, I was a member. I was appointed by Rich Callum. I thanked him for that appointment back when I applied for that position. Well, the current chair has a really good documentation of when I was appointed to that. So I believe it's around 2013, approximately 2014. I witnessed the work session video that was posted on, on your site. And I was quite saddened by the the apparent lack of understanding of what the Human Relations Commission is supposed to be and how it's supposed to engage with community members. As we know, this particular commission is shrouding controversy all the time because of the nature of the topics that are discussed. This is truly one of the only places in the city where difference, differences of opinion are discussed with relations to minoritized populations and increasing minoritized populations in the city of Albany. In my time as a member of that commission, I served, I had the opportunity to lead some very prominent programs, very uplifting programs, feel-good programs for the city. Also, I was faced with having to mitigate harassment and discrimination, bigotry from citizens throughout Albany in my time. One of the more prominent issues we had was at the Veterans Day Parade, neo-Nazis leafleting illegally that particular parade and disperging that particular parade. So yesterday, when I, when I watched that particular video and watching the actions of elected officials who were openly contemplating or discussing the broken nature of this particular council was, was pretty sad. I have endured, I personally have endured disrespect from the city council, some, some city council members. I have personally endured disparagement to my name and for no other reasons, other than providing a voice for many of the people who are afraid to come before your body. And that's what the beauty of the Human Relations Commission is. It's a deliberative place where people can come. When I resigned, I did not receive a single phone call as the most recent members of the HRC who resigned recently said to, have said they have had, or actually commissioners have said they have made or conversations they have had. I watched that video and heard city councilmen, state county people saying that they have had conversations with the people who have resigned. I wish I would have been extended that courtesy after having served six years and having endured innumerable, innumerable slights and disparagement in public for a thank you. I commend Mayor Canopa for her letter that she did send me as an appreciation. There was a certificate. I appreciate that. I, I thank you, Mayor. I thank you in public. But for each and one, and every one of the other commissioners to openly discuss how they've had conversations with commissioners who have resigned, because there's a mass exodus of a particular type of participant is somewhat discouraging. It's in, it's, it's quite frankly, it's disappointing. And I volunteered my time. I know that Denise Tefan volunteered her time. Graham Kislinberry volunteered their time. Tina Dodge, Tina Dodge volunteered her time. Alice volunteered her time. And I don't believe any one of them received personal phone calls or emails concerned about this mass exodus that we had. Kim Whitley, in, in addition to that. So I, I find it quite striking that two members who recently resigned has caused this upheaval and consternation and angst amongst the city council. We, we say we want fair and equal treatment, but it seems like we are giving fair and equal treatment to very squeaky wheels, because I've been accused of being a squeaky wheel. And perhaps I've been remiss in not being squeaky enough. And I, I just don't understand this idea and this notion that we cannot have conversations. I have not agreed with members of my commission on a number of occasions, and it never got to be disrespectful. I've actually had a city commissioner come in to the HRC and bully us, telling us how we should be operating. Right? So, I'm gonna wrap this up by just saying, you know, this commission warrants the due respect from which it came. We are talking about a commission, you can look at the history that Stephanie has put together so beautifully. You can look at that history, and it's not a very pretty history. And you can see how much sacrifice people have done with sacrificing not coming and seeing their families on particular nights of the year, or going out into the commune to represent Albany in a great way. And quite frankly, I am completely disappointed with the tone, the tenor, the behavior of commissioners that want to only focus on people they seem to align with ideologically, because this is where this is coming from, I assume, an ideological difference. I engage with my Republican and liberal Democrat friends. I'm an actual independent, quite frankly. I'm not in, aligned with a particular party. Somehow, people believe because of how I personally think, I, I act a particular way. And that's, that's a mistake. So, you know, you want to suspend this for the year, you know? It's unfortunate that, that, that folks want to behave in this manner, essentially blocking progress. I'm sorry, but Albany's changing, folks. Albany's changing, and we have to change with it. And perhaps it's fortunate that we're gonna get a new city council in, perhaps it's fortunate that folks are deciding not to run again, you know? But I wish I was extended the same courtesy that those two, three people who are resigning from this commission hasn't received. I, more than anyone else, over the last six years, or seven years now, because I've been off it for a year, I, more than anyone else, have witnessed all of Albany's beauty, and I have seen personally firsthand all of Albany's ugly underbelly as well. So, I know other people are gonna be speaking more eloquent than I am. I, 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 I just dismayed and very disappointed in the manner in which the city council debated this last, their last work session. We can do better. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Javier. And, and we do greatly appreciate your service. Six, six years is a long time on a board and commission, and we thank you so much. So, okay, then next would be Keith. Are you still on? I'm gonna put, put your camera on and your microphone.
Hello, I'm here.
I'm trying to find you. Can you get your mic on, or your video on?
Yes, I, there you go.
Okay, gotcha. So, yes, state your name and spell your last name, furnish your address, please.
Hello, I'm Keith Kolkow. I live at twenty-twenty Seventeenth Avenue Southwest here in Albany, and I am representing myself. I just would like to thank the mayor and everyone else for their service that they do provide our city. And I want to remind people that whether you agree with the commission's duties and mission or not, you do have the duty to appoint people to those commissions, whether you agree or not. And I know that people have applied and people are waiting to serve on this commission. And it's really unfortunate that you don't want to appoint people who are waiting and willing to serve their city in this capacity. It's something that's greatly needed in our community, especially during these times when we've seen an uptick in hate and bias crimes that are really scourge of our community, and we need to have commissions like the Human Relations Commission address those and meet people where they are and connect them to the resources that they need to deal with the trauma of going through those kind of attacks that are very personal and affect entire families. I just want to remind everyone that it's completely within your power to just appoint people who are willing to do the work. And I just want to encourage you all to do the jobs that you were elected to do and appoint people to that commission, and don't let it sit by the wayside. They'll lose three months of work, three months that they can be outreach to the community, three months where they can be helping families and individuals in our community. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Keith. And I see Graham did show up, arrive. Graham Kisselberry, I think you kind of missed what was mentioned earlier. I wanted to, or can you get your video on too? I do want to make sure you were clarified that the, the motion the council made was not dismant, disbanding the HRC. It was just to put it on hold for the, for the remainder of this year, but it was not disbanding it. So, I think kind of the headline in the Democrat Herald saying that it kind of killed the HRC, I think kind of didn't get things quite clarified. So, so Graham, yes, would you like to state your name, spell your last name, furnish your address, please?
Okay, Graham Kisselberry, and can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. K-I-S-L-I-N-G-B-U-R-Y, twelve forty, Tenth Avenue Southwest. Thank you very much. I, this is, I really loved being on the Human Relations Commission. And back in two thousand six, I was on what was called Everybody's Neighborhood Committee. A group of people got together after they saw something that disturbed them very much. It was when a lady from Corvallis came over and presented this idea of creating a modest Latinx-themed plaza in our vast Timberland Memorial Park. You would have thought that she had committed a crime. She was trashed. And we, and, and, you know, it just left a bad taste in my mouth and, and other people, and some of whom may be listening tonight. And we spent a lot of time working on this, and we worked with the council. We wanted to call it the Human Rights Commission, but the council thought it was too strident. So, it became the Human Relations Commission. And I had the opportunity to serve with a wonderful group of people in, from two thousand fifteen to two thousand seventeen, Javier, Tina Dodge Vera, Denise Tefan, Kim Whitley, Chris Equinowa, and Alice Brockrightens. I've heard this term about the diversity of, of thought and opinion. Well, we, we, we had a lot of different thought. We didn't agree on everything. What we did agree on was the mission. Now, I've heard it called the bylaws. I think it's either the mission, or it's now an ordinance of the Human Relations Commission. And, and we were aligned with that. And we did, we didn't really do radical things. We, we, we helped sponsor events, we, the Martin Luther King Day events, the screening of Selma on a cold January day, and a hundred people showed up, and we had great discussions afterwards. We, we went to shot coffee with the cops. We, we did many things in the community. And I've heard, and we helped with Festival Latino, and I heard one, one of the current commission members are proud of disturbing, you know? I mean, yeah, you can have your opinion about anything, but why would you get on a commission and, and then kind of diss a festival that we have? You know, why do we have a Festival Latino? Well, why does Junction City have a Scandinavian festival? Nobody complains about that. Why does Mount Angel have an Oktoberfest? I don't hear anybody complaining about celebration of Germanic culture in, in Mount Angel. Maybe a few complaints about DUIs and things like that. So, I just think we, we go down a, it's important, and I heard some, I read some of the, the people who left the commission, maybe they, maybe, maybe it wasn't the right place for them. Maybe, you know, when, when, if, if we're just looking for people to be contrarians, you get nothing done, and of course, it will be broken. And I saw tonight somebody who does align, Stephanie Newton. What a great presentation, and what a welcoming person she has been. And that's just the way she is. I'll go back two years ago, she was running for Lynn County Commissioner, and her opponent in the primary was, had to drop out because of health, a, a, a health concern. What did Stephanie do? She didn't, you know, she didn't, you know, gloat over that. She made a batch of blueberry muffins and took this to that person. That's the way she is. That's the kind of person we want. We want some, a, a group that is welcoming. This is a group that is about people. That's, it's as simple as that. And you, you, it just seems like the council has been tortured over this at times, and it shouldn't be. It's, it's really simple. And so, you suspended the HRC for the rest of the year, and I would, I would say, please leave it to next year's council to do all the reviews and, and the appointments, and it sounds like that's what's gonna happen. And please think of, of appointing people who align with this mission, who are excited about it, who are passionate about it, they'll get something done. They're not gonna, they're not gonna do anything awful. And, you know, I know that one of the current applicants is Fay Stutwaters, Scott Waters. What an excellent commissioner she would be. She's a Marine, she served as a Lynn County Circuit Judge, and is currently the Senior Assistant Attorney General for the State, the Oregon Department of Justice. She's the State Director of Civil Rights. And I know that she's a, she's a person who gets along with everyone. So, I just say, please, please consider, I, I just, this place thing is very close to my heart, and, and I just, and I applaud the city, I applaud the, you know, for, you know, the direction and guidance we've had from staff, and I think, you know, make, make good decisions in, in two thousand twenty-one. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Graham. The other person was a Michi DeRose, so I don't, DeRose, so I don't think they, I don't see their name at all on that. So, with that, that was business from the public. I don't know if there was anybody else that was wanting to speak, but we needed to take care of some ordinances. We had staff that was waiting in a consultant online. So, I'll do is after we get through our business, I'll re-ask if there's any more business from the public then. So, if anybody else speak on, over the HRC, you can at that point, so.
Counsel Olson's waiting then.
Dick was, okay, yeah, Dick?
Shut off again. Apparently, I've been shut off, and, well.
No, we can hear you, Dick, and we can see you. Yeah.
Well, I'm asking whether I've been shut off. I can't tell whether I have or not.
Nope, we can hear you. We can see you.
Okay, wonderful. I see, I see, well, here the, you know, the border has lighted up. It hasn't been lighting up before, so I thought I'd try to been shut off. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Thank you, folks. And so, next from there is the second reading of ordinance, and I do believe, Sean, you were going to, or was it David, kind of remind the council of this process? You needed to have a.
Actually, Jeff, I think.
Yeah, you're stuck with me, Mayor. Thank you. So, sorry to make this a little more complicated than we would like to for council tonight, but what we're trying to do here is respond to the public testimony that was received during the public hearing that you held at the last meeting, and make sure that the ordinance that you adopt captures your findings and conclusions and places the city in, in the best position that, that we can from a, from a legal standpoint in, in making a land use decision. And so, in order to do that all tonight, what we would recommend that you do is take the, the two second readings on the ordinances that you considered at the last meeting. Charter requires that they come back to you and, and be read tonight. And on the first ordinance that is in reference to the Development Code amendments, we would recommend that you either not make, not consider it or vote it down. Voting it down is probably the cleanest. And then, we will, we will consider a new ordinance for Development Code amendments, and we'll talk more about that when we get to that point. The second ordinance that you're having a second reading on is for the Municipal Code amendments that are meant to go hand in hand with the Development Code changes that you're considering. And so, when that is, that one's read a second time, what we would propose you do is defer your vote on that ordinance until the develop, the new Development Code ordinance catches up to it, because they have to work together. So, just let that one be read and then defer the vote. So, just a quick summary, the ordinance that you're gonna have a second time now for the Development Code, we would propose that you vote that down. For the Municipal Code, or excuse me, yes, for the Municipal Code ordinance that will be read a second time following that, we would propose you defer your vote, and then we'll go on to the, on to the next item. Any questions for me on that? Is that complicated enough?
Question, or Jeff? Okay.
Does that go?
I think somebody did, I think maybe it's yours getting a feedback, or maybe it's Sean's. Somebody's mic is giving some feedback there. So, what you need is you have an ordinance on page fifty, and Sean will need to read that second reading.
Yep. All right. An ordinance amending ordinance number four, 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 one, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code text and adopting findings.
Okay. Counsel? You, you would need to make a motion and then would need to vote no on this one.
Well, or either that, or the motion, or the ordinance can die for lack of motion.
That works.
Is that okay, Sean?
Yes, it is. It's just cleaner to vote no, so we can bring it back up in a, in a, in a few minutes, because otherwise, this one could technically be brought back at another meeting if, if it's, if it doesn't have enough votes on it, so.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Nope. We don't want to. Wait.
Wait, what do we want?
I understand, and I can make the motion, but then I'll vote no.
Ah, gotcha.
Yeah, that's what was, that was stated. So, Bill made the motion to adopt the ordinance, and is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, I seconded it three times now.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? And remember the way you need to vote.
Isn't that jury-mandering?
Yeah.
Bill, collusion.
All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay. Motion failed, zero to six. So, okay, we went, we did that one. The next one, you're needing to make a motion to defer this one, but we, and this ordinance is on page fifty-one, so Sean, you need to read that one.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code Title Seven, Public Peace, Morals, and Safety to Update Tree Regulations for Consistency with Current Practices and the Albany Development Code.
I move to, I move to defer the vote on this ordinance.
Okay, and tell it catches up with the other ordinance. Right. Okay. Right, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, got that one, motion carried. All right, now the next is the first reading, but Jeff, did you have anything you wanted to say on this one?
Just, just real briefly, I feel like I owe you all a copy or something after this. This is really complicated.
You owe us a scotch.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking, I just didn't know if I should say it. So, uh, so what, what we're having, happened here with this next ordinance, uh, you deliberated following the public hearing the last time, and you asked us to consider some public testimony that was received. And so we've done that, and we've provided some additional findings and conclusions, uh, attached to this ordinance. And then we've al, we've also strengthened the language, uh, within this ordinance to, to document, uh, your decision. And the reason we've done that, uh, is because last time we, we, uh, we missed that the, there was some critical language that we had in the sample motion, and, uh, we didn't use it to move it along, and so we needed to, to capture that. So what, uh, after you've, um, deliberated any further, uh, tonight, if you feel that's necessary, uh, if you decide that it's appropriate to move forward with adoption of this ordinance, uh, we would request that you, uh, make the motion as written on page 59 of your council packet, uh, to adopt the ordinance, and that'll send us on our way. It is a lengthy motion, uh, but, uh, I think it's what we need to do just to make things, uh, as clean as we can at this point. And, uh, this, again, what's happening here with this ordinance, the, the text, proposed text amendments are unchanged from what you saw and reviewed previously. What this is doing is documenting our responses and our findings, uh, clearly, and providing the responses to the, uh, public testimony as was requested of us at the last meeting. But again, no differences to the text changes. There was nothing raised that, uh, upon further evaluation, we, uh, we believe required any amendments. So I'll turn it back over to you for any further deliberation, uh, and if that's not necessary, uh, then consider the motion on, uh, page 59 of your packet.
We need to have the first reading of the ordinance done though, first, so. On that. Sean?
All right. An ordinance, oh. Okay, here we go. An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code text and adopting findings.
I'll move to approve.
Well, could, that motion, the order, title only.
Second.
Great, all right, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
I'm opposed, I am opposed.
Oh, Dick's opposed? Okay, so we can't have the second. So, um, that's held over to the next meeting. Okay?
So we'll bring that one, and then the, the tree, uh, reading of the tree, second reading of the tree ordinance, or the Municipal Code language that, uh, refers to, uh, tree protections. Those will both come back together then as a package and can be acted on at the same time.
Okay. Yeah, there's already a second reading of the, um, tree ordinance one, but, so this will be the second reading of this amended one, updated one, and then, um, and then the tree, we can do them at the same time. Okay? All right, anything else?
Okay.
Okay. Next, um, is adoption of a resolution, and this goes way down to page 393, and this is, um, system development charges. And which staff is gonna take care of that? Stacy? Or Chris?
Uh, sorry, Mayor, this is a finance item.
Their system development charges? Who's handling that one?
Should we do that? The finance department handles, uh, find the SDC items for financing.
Okay, Gina Jaeger, I'm looking for.
I gotta scroll way down to get to page 393.
Okay, I don't see, I don't see Gina's name here, um, on the list of folks. But this is, um, the list of attendees. Standby.
Well, as soon as I can get to the item here, um.
Yeah, if you go to thumbnails on the left, you can get down there pretty quick.
I just got to it. So this is just, uh, levying an assessment. Um, so really, we don't need to have a staff report on this one, counsel. You just have a resolution on page 393 unless you've got questions.
I'll move for adoption of the resolution. I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. Uh, next would be award of contract. This is for the Americans with Disabilities Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. This starts on page 396 through 397, and this must be Stacy's.
Good evening, yeah, hi, good, good evening, Mayor and counselors. Um, so this is a recommendation from staff for council approval of a contract award, um, in the amount of $193,781 to MIG of Portland, Oregon. It's for the completion of a self-evaluation and transition plan for accessibility in the public right-of-way. MIG was selected out of a field of seven consultants who responded to a request for qualifications that was publicly advertised. Completion of this self-evaluation and transition plan is going to help the city meet the federal requirement and, um, its legal obligations under Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Um, we did, um, receive the statements of qualifications from the seven consultants. Um, they included examples of similar work efforts in their statements that included references and final costs, and this was, um, useful because it allowed staff to be able to review the fee proposal we received from MIG to make sure that it was, their fee proposal was consistent with the cost of similar work efforts in other cities here in Oregon and, and in the Northwest. And there is a description of the project in the memo that's included in your council packet, and funding for this project will be from the Street Capital and Restoration Fund. Are there any questions?
I'll move to approve. Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, one no. Okay. Um, next is adoption of the consent calendar, and counsel, if you don't have any items that need to be pulled off this evening for discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Bessie?
Yeah, I, I just, before we vote on it, I don't wanna take it off, um, but since we've put the resignations and appointments of committee members on the consent calendar, I, I just wanna make a point that, from my understanding, is that every person that resigns or, or has to quit because they moved or whatever, gets a letter. I, I don't know anything about a phone call or anything like that, um, but I, I do, that's what I believe, and I just wanna kinda make that clear that there's no special, you know, uh, attention or not getting attention, that type of a thing. Uh, I think we do it all similar, so I just wanted to kinda bring that out.
Thank you, Bessie, I was gonna make the same comment, thank you.
They all get a letter and a certificate for serving. Um, staff has up a very nice certificate for everyone, but, um, yeah, so, no, that isn't, isn't acknowledged, so, least we can do. So, takes a lot of folks' time and, um, energy, and we're very grateful for the service. So, okay?
I'll make a motion for adoption of the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. Okay, so we got through our business items, then I will go back to ask, was there anyone that wanted to add any more additional comments regarding, um, under the business from the public piece regarding, um, the HRC? I do, if there is anyone, I would also like to kinda mention to, um, um, you know, not, um, sort of refrain from repeating the same statements, that there was something new, like we did receive 37 letters that were very well-written, wonderful comments. We greatly appreciate, um, the comments from everyone, but if there was any that was different, but, um, Dick, your hand up?
It is, uh, I've got a bunch of letters, but I don't think I got all that you ran off. So could I get copies of those who submitted letters? Or copies of the letters?
I think they came, um, the email was later this afternoon, Dick, if you hadn't checked, probably close to like 5:30.
You did.
Do you think I have them on my email already?
You do, Counsel Olson, you have a, uh, an email with all of them attached.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
May I ask, may I ask a question? Forgive me, I didn't, I didn't, uh, request permission earlier, but I, I.
Turn your camera on so we can know who's talking.
Yes, I will do that. Hang on, I'm sorry, I just walked in the house with my hands full, but I've been on the call. Um, so, good evening, would like to access my camera. Yes, here we go. Okay, hi, um, this is Matilda Novak.
Hey, we don't see a camera, Matilda, but we can hear you.
Well, that's very odd, because it, it asked permission to, oh, here we go. Did that help at all?
Uh, no.
Okay, my apologies, I don't usually, screen sharing disabled. Well, I'd really like to share my screen, but it's not letting me.
Well, go ahead, um, state your name, tell your last name and address.
All right, my last name is Novak, Matilda Novak. My address is 3383 Northwest Summer Hill Place. And I think you're gonna be able to see me now. There we go. Um, can you see me? Hello? So, um, I just wanted to ask, based on something that Bessie said a moment ago, with regard to people who stepped down from a position, like the commission, the HRC, and she said that the protocol was that they are presented with a certificate as, as, uh, Mr. Cervantes was, and that it's, it's not the protocol to give them a phone call, correct? Because he seemed very upset that he didn't receive a phone call when he stepped down, and yet he did thank Mayor Canopa for the certificate that he received, which is, if I heard correctly, if I'm understanding correctly, that is the actual appropriate protocol from when someone steps down for whatever reason.
Right, it's, it's up to every member who appoint, 'cause each counselor appoints somebody to one of the boards, so, um, it's up to them. They can reach out if somebody does, if it's one of their appointments.
Uh-huh.
It usually does. Usually what happens is a member will like send me an email, I'm no longer able to, you know, serve, and you're on back to them. But we do send a formal letter and a, um, certificate. Um, after it's formalized, um, like Jess, like Jesse's and Daniel's will be receiving a letter and a certificate, because it's now, the act has already taken place to formalize a resignation on that.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification. And again, the reason I asked was because I did listen to Mr. Cervantes, and he did seem genuinely upset at, at not having received anything other than apparently what is the common practice.
Yeah.
And standard procedure. Okay, thank you for the clarification, I appreciate that.
Yep, thanks, Matilda, yep, you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anybody?
Jeff had something.
What's that?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Is that, is that it?
I was wondering, well, I just wanted to. I just wanted to clarify, I believe what Javier was very frustrated about, and I don't wanna speak for him, but it, it would, I'm going to, um, go on the line and say it might be the perceived, uh, which of favoritism is the right word, or, or preferential treatment, or something, since everyone should get just a standard, everyone's gonna get the same thing, get the same thing. So I think, I just wanted to clarify, that was my understanding.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Uh, Mayor?
Uh-huh. Yep, Rich?
Um, let's understand, he was talking about me. Um, I made a deal with him that I would appoint him to that for the last year. Uh, if he would do some things, one of which was, when they were gonna, wanted us to vote on something, he'd bring it to us before. If it was gonna be something big, he'd bring it to us, and he didn't do it.
That is untrue, that is untrue. That is untrue.
Now, excuse me, you didn't bring it to me? This is not a debate, sir.
That's untrue.
Now, you can call me a liar if you want, but you're the one who made a deal and then didn't not keep your word.
Okay, let's.
That's the problem, sir. And so I didn't give you a phone call. I gave a phone call to a guy who had a, had a, a, um, example of bad feeling about a commission. And so when that happened, I called him to find out what it was. And I thanked him for his service. Yeah, I did. I didn't thank you for your service because, well, I didn't think you did a good job.
Okay, I think this.
I have a right to speak, to speak back to that, um, Mayor Canopa. If he's gonna do that, that, that's to be a behavior completely unbecoming of a, of a public servant. I have a right to defend myself.
No, you don't.
Yes, I do. I'm a tax-paying person who pays your salary, sir. Oh, no, I don't.
You can come over to my place and defend it in person, sir.
So I can see that, um, there's kind of some little, um, tension taking place here, so let's just go ahead, and we're gonna, um, finish with business from the public. And, um, with that, now it is business from the council. And I do want to, everybody that did, um, comment, um, I want you to realize, our community does, we care deeply about everyone in our community, and there's times we have little bumps that come along the road, and, um, we'll work it out, so, um, but I do wanna thank everybody on that. Mayor, is there someone else? What's that? Oh, okay, yeah, I am, uh-huh, Jody, is it Jody?
It is, yeah, can you hear me okay?
Um, yes.
Okay, my name is Jody Yoder. Um, I'm not gonna give my address, because I, I know it limits some residents who don't feel safe giving their addresses. I would be fine with it, but, um, I, I know some people aren't, and some people are not safe giving addresses. I wasn't gonna talk, and I, I went back and forth, and today kinda threw me for a loop. And I, I am not speaking of any failure of the HRC, but what I see as a failure of this council. Like you said, yesterday councils exist at the, or commissions exist at the will of the council. Um, it is your job to ensure that they're working in a way that makes Albany better for those who have been overlooked. The schools are doing it, workplaces are doing it, and our city is failing to take action against, when there's blatant racism, sexism, homophobia, and bigotry. I mean, really, it's, it's just a lack of overall empathy. We've got to start calling out these unacceptable actions when we're sitting within our own circles. I, I was sitting watching the meeting last night with my daughter doing homework, because I've got six kids in four different schools, in Albany schools, um, so they're by me all the time. And at one point, she leaned over, shocked at what she was hearing. And at one point she leaned over shocked at what she was hearing. When she has to hear as a little ten year old girl about a bitch session. And hear that as a girl, that shouldn't happen. And it shouldn't happen without members of the council calling it out, not if it's, not if it's public, not if it's being recorded. That was deeply hurtful. We're in challenging times. As a nation, as a state. And we've got to face the fact that there is a national civil rights movement happening at the same time as a great divide in our nation. Politics and disagreements, what's in the best interest of the country? And I would challenge you each to understand that whether we are on one side or the other, or think we're in the middle. We are playing a part in this, these are important times. I'm gonna close with a couple of quotes and I hope. They'll encourage those who are siding with people. Calling for common understanding and diversity of thought and unity to consider what side of history they may be on. Shallow understanding from people of goodwill is more frustrating than absolute misunderstanding from people of ill will. Lukewarm acceptance is much more bewildering than outright rejection. That's by Dr. King. And then a quote that has shaped my life and changed me significantly. We must always take sides. Neutrality helps the oppressor, never the victim. Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormented. And I know these are terribly trying times. But you've got to show the children in your community that you adults are better than this. That their city leaders will not be petty, will not be sexist or racist. That when it comes to that, there's not diversity of thought that can be tolerated. Thank you for listening, again, I wasn't going to speak, but I felt compelled to do so.
Thank you, Jody, so much for your thoughts and. Um, I do want to apologize to Javier, I think he did leave and.
I'm still here.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry Javier, kind of, kind of had cut off, I knew there was some tension going and. Um, and I don't like seeing our council meetings becoming a big debate, so, but I do want to make sure you know that you really.
I'm, I'm.
Everybody's opinion.
I appreciate it, I'm perfectly calm, however, it's just, I take my, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speak more than, more than this, I'm just, I am not. A person who wants his name disparaged in a particular way. And the behavior is unfortunate, um, and that's really a testament to people who act out that way. And I, I, I leave with a clean conscience, thank you very much for hearing me out today.
You bet, thank you, thank you Javier. Okay, um, so that finishes our business from the public.
And Mayor, I'd jump in real quick, um, for regular business again, I just want to clarify something that we did.
Oh, okay.
Back on the ordinance that we made the first motion on that failed for the second reading tonight. On page fifty eight of that, uh, excuse me, fifty nine, the ordinance starts on page sixty, on page fifty nine at the bottom. Was the motion to adopt that the staff had approved, had prepared for the council. I just wanted to clarify that the, the motion to approve tonight was based on that motion to adopt language. And if, if we could, if we could do that, is that, is that correct, whoever made the first, the, the motion to.
But to come back for a second reading.
Well, it does come back for a second, so.
And then adopted on, adopt that ordinance or read that language.
Okay, as long as we, if we could either, yeah, we can do that, we can come back and read it, read that language at the, at the second reading on. That'll work, I just wanted to clarify that, but thank you, thank you very much.
You bet, thank you.
Motion and, and that was my intention.
Okay, great.
All right, Bessie?
Well, I was just gonna ask, okay, the first, the first reading was done and it passed. The second, I mean, if there's only one vote for the second, does it come back? I thought that it was only if, if the first reading is, uh, has a no.
Well, the, the motion was made tonight was to read the ordinance in a second time and title only and that motion failed five to one. So the next reading will be a second reading automatic at the, at our next council meeting.
Okay, I guess there were, I guess there were instances, I got them, thank you.
Thank you. All right? Anything else on that? Some reason. Feedback. Oh, I did. Um, okay, business from the council and let's see, Bessie?
Um, nothing denied, thank you.
Mm hmm, Mike?
No, I better not say anything.
Okay.
I'll just pass on tonight because, yeah.
All right, Alex?
Um, I just want people to be aware that I've seen a lot of car crashes in the last, since this rain started. People are driving too fast and people are not turning their lights on and it's getting darker earlier and it's a public safety issue. I drive a silver car and at dusk you can't see my car if my lights aren't on. People know, make sure to turn their lights on, because there's kids out there, there's bicyclists still riding and bikes and more cyclists. Uh, they need to be safe and then make sure you turn your lights on.
I know, I would, most cars now, mine are always on, you know, during the daylight and then you don't have to worry about it, but I wish some people would just use that little feature, so. Been on ours for twenty years, but yeah, so, okay, Bill, anything?
Yes, uh, we had an AMPO meeting today and. I had Peter forward you, everyone, a flyer that deals, it's got some information on a potential new bus route between Albany and Salem. Between City of Albany, City of Salem and AMPO, those three agencies are looking into this. It's very early on in the planning stages, but there is a, a meeting coming up next month. Information's on the flyer, if you're interested, you're welcome to attend.
And actually, I did, that's very encouraging to think to get bus routes going from Salem to Albany would be just great. So that's been needed for a long time, anything to kind of ease up I five would be wonderful, so, thank you, Bill.
Well, and, and as a result, a House bill twenty seventeen, which is generating more revenue for transportation. As an example, Benton County goes to Monroe. And they're considering extending their line on down to Junction City where you could get on lane transit. And go on down in Eugene and Springfield and that area, so I think you're gonna see more of expand these types of routes.
Mm hmm, wow, yeah. Okay, um, next on the other screen is Dick.
Uh, yes, um. I am somewhat twirling inwardly. Uh, when I was first on this council forty seven years ago. I made a motion that we really ought to listen to the public and let them say what they want to say. And not shut them off after three minutes like the. School board and the county did and some still do. But, um, tonight, uh. I was wishing I had a couple more pills for my chair because I'm, I'm wearing out listening to the length of this meeting. And I hope those who spoke at length are still here listening so they can hear all the good stuff. So, uh, I am somewhat tempted to rescind my motion that forty seven years ago. That we not limit our people who speak here to three minutes, so. I don't really mean that, but I sometimes think of it, so.
It's worked out well, us not having time limits, so.
Yeah, I'm glad we've done it for forty seven years.
Yeah, yeah, all right, is that it, Dick?
That's it.
Okay, all right, and Rich? You're way down on the bottom of the screen.
Oh, I'm up in the upper left corner, huh? We have had here in the last month or so. Uh, moving out of my apartment into motorhome. And what that means is I have a bunch of. Extra stuff, things like plates and glasses and, you know, and that works out very well for people who just lost all their stuff in the fire. That's where I was, was delivering some, a chair and a chest and, and some. Um, cups and glasses to a guy. Who's going to, well, it's out the, just out of middle city where he, where he's gonna take it, take it on up to. Their, I don't know, brother in law's garage or something where he and his wife are gonna be living. Uh, sorry, I was not here at the beginning, but that's what I was doing. I don't think you missed me all that much.
That's it. Yep, glad you made it. Thank you, Rich, okay, um, Peter, did you have anything?
Just one thing, Mayor.
Didn't have anything, so go ahead.
Just one thing, and, uh, I don't think I'm stealing his thunder because he already sent you a message, but. A couple of days ago, we got a plaque from ICMA recognizing the City of Albany as one of thirty six cities in the city to excel in the area performance management. And, uh, our deputy city manager Jorge Salinas is the primary mover behind that. He's also been the staff support for the HRC for years. Uh, he's distinguished himself as a project manager. On so many projects and he's key to helping our municipal implementation and seeing that through. He is always a driving force in budgeting for the city. And he's led his IT staff wonderfully, and I have really come to appreciate his sense of humor. And he's a friend of mine, and so it's with sadness that I find out that he's been able to convince a county in Florida to. Hire him on as their deputy county manager. So unfortunately, we'll lose, we'll lose Jorge as of January fourth of next year when he starts there. Um, but, um. Our loss is their big gain, so I wanted to commend Jorge and thank him publicly for all he's done, we'll have his, we'll have him around for a couple more months, but. And we'll have a chance to better recognize him in the future.
Thank you, Peter, I appreciate it.
I know, it's gonna be so hard and, um, you know, when I kind of had a heads up on it and then they called the other day for a reference and. I tried all I could to just, just discourage them and, and take, and grab, it didn't work. Yeah, yeah, congratulations Jorge and, um. You know, they in Florida, they're gonna be very lucky, so I just hope you're not gonna be moving to where there's a bunch of alligators.
Move on the high ground if you can.
Yeah, that's what I think of Florida is alligators and hurricanes. There you go.
Well, high ground is only about two hundred and some feet.
Well, that's higher than.
It's a garbage, a garbage pile is what it is.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, thank you, thank you Jorge, anything else, Peter?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, did staff have anything else that they needed to bring up they forgot about?
Um, Mayor, I had one. Short thing I wanted to update the council on, but it would be an executive session matter that kind of occurred today. So we didn't have time to advertise it, so, uh.
Okay.
Go into a quick executive session, I'll give, I'll give you the update on that.
For tonight? An executive session? Okay, I don't have any script or anything.
Well, this is, so it's fine, we can, we can, it's kind of a. Like I said, spur of the moment type executive session item, um, it has to do with litigation or litigation likely to be filed, that's actually current litigation that we're in. And so that's an appropriate subject for the under O R S one ninety two six sixty. And so with that, we could go into executive session and we could come back out literally in three minutes, so.
Okay, all right, then with that, we will go into executive session and wait till, um, Jorge gives us. Okay, all right, then with that, we'll go into executive session and wait till, um, Jorge gives us.